I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, November 26th. And if the clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Here.
Mayor Rep?
Here. You have before you the minutes from the previous meeting, which was the regular meeting of November the 12th. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We'll move on to the public hearings. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Following public hearings are to hear comments on five code cases to determine whether they constitute a nuisance as defined by Chapter 10, Section 10-211, and Chapter 34, Section 34-3 of the Port Huron City Code. Public hearing number one is on code case number 11-047-1208 Mini Street, and after the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Yes, before we open it up to the public, perhaps we could have Ms. Harmer come up and give us some history on this one.
The property at 1208 Mini Street, excuse me, has had the water shut off for a little over a year. There are back taxes due for 2011 and 2012, and the property itself, as you can see, is in various stages of disrepair. Mechanical systems, there's an attachment on the back that has not been corrected with the violations, the chimney, the foundation, the interior, et cetera. We have made the attempts to contact the owners of record, which was household finance, and they have not responded to any of our requests.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number one for the code case at 1208 Mini Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number one closed and ask for a motion from council.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there any discussion?
Uh.
Well, we've got two going here. Councilmember Moller.
On the city Port Huron Code Enforcement Report, the last line, it says on 11/12/12, we scheduled a public hearing for June 11, 2012?
Yes, thank you for catching that, Councilmember Moller. That's a typo. We had originally had a batch of these that we were going to schedule for June, and we had to go back and do some title work to make sure we had the correct owners of record, and we failed to change that on the original report to you. I apologize for that.
So the public hearing was on?
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I only have one question. We have a member of the audience here, and I made a question, and I couldn't have the answer. Do we have any jurisdiction to sell any of these properties when they come up?
No, sir, we do not. Not until, in some cases, after the house is demolished, we'll obtain the vacant land through usually a tax foreclosure sale through the county, but until then, no.
Thank you, that's all. You did no.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to number two.
Public hearing two is for code case 11-048, 3215 Poplar Street. After the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations. Go ahead.
Mayor and councilmembers, 3215 Poplar Street, the water's been off since March of 2010. Back property taxes are due from 2009, 2010, 2011, and 2012. We're also, we're made aware by Mr. Kearns of a possible lien by the Department of Treasury, and certainly the city of Port Huron also has a lien of $1,500. There was a garage that was in disrepair that the property owner did not respond to our request, and in August of 2010, we had that torn down. I was able to track the property owner down. It is an individual who is elderly, who is under some nursing care, and the property had then transferred onto their, I believe it's their son. I've left several messages with the number that was given to us, which is where the elderly individual resides with care facility, and to no avail, the son has not returned our calls, has not responded to our mailings, and we have posted the property several times.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on code case on 3215 Poplar Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number two closed and ask for a motion from council.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember.
Same correction as on the last one.
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilmember Moller. I believe unfortunately, it's probably on all of those tonight. They were all in the same group.
It is. I'll make it for all of them then, right now. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number three.
Number three is for code case 12-002, 1321 Francis Street. After the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Go ahead.
Mayor and councilmembers, the address on Francis Street, actually the water account remains active. There's little to no usage, but it has not been turned off. The property does appear to be vacant, well, in fact, is vacant. We were in there, of course. Property taxes due for 2010, 2011, and 2012, and again, notifications have gone out, several of them. We also notified not only the owner of record, who did not respond, but also a bank that we found that potentially would have an interest in it as far as a mortgage, and they have not responded as well.
Thank you. Are the water bills paid? You said the taxes were owing, but the water is still on. I'm just curious.
There is, there's no outstanding balance, but there's also no, you know, visible usage, right?
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on the code case for 1321 Francis Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number three closed and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris? Is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Move on to public hearing number four.
Public hearing number four is for code case number 12-017, 1909 Ninth Street. Council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations following the public hearing.
Mayor and councilmembers, property on Ninth Street also has the water shut off. Currently, there are no taxes due, although it is in a foreclosure, and while we had contacted the property owner, they had indicated to us several times that because of their situation with bankruptcy and foreclosures, they would not be responding. The Roundpoint Mortgage Company also has been notified, but again, has not responded to our requests.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on code case on 1909 Ninth Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number four closed and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Councilmember Moller, and a second?
So part.
Councilmember Cole, is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. And we'll move on to public hearing number five.
Public hearing number five is for code case 12-018, 1629 Thomas Street. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Mayor and councilmembers, 1629 Thomas Street has had the water shut off since 2009 and owes property taxes for 2010, 11, and 12. First picture from the street doesn't look too bad, but as you walk around the building, the condition of the roof has allowed, of course, water infiltration, and the interior has sustained quite a bit of damage because of that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council relative to 1629 Thomas Street? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number five closed and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller, and a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, any discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Did you say anything about the owner, or did I dismiss it? Have you had contact with the owner?
We have not had contact with the owner. We've, of course, sent our normal notifications out and posted it. There did not appear to be any response from them, even though they live nearby. We also contacted Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation and representatives of Trot and Trot, so we'll leave it through a foreclosure process.
So are we making the assumption the building's been vacant for three years?
Yes.
And the neighbors haven't complained, or?
No, like I said, from the street, when you drive by, it didn't really appear to be in bad condition, but as you walk around, the condition of the roof and as the shingles have been blown off continually, the water infiltration has really caused the problem inside.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Thank you, Kim. Move on now to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, they can come to the podium and have four minutes if you just give us your name.
Did you do anything about the house on 1011 Mini Street? 1011 Erie Street? Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Never done this.
There wasn't one on Erie Street.
There wasn't one on Erie Street? Because we got a notice.
Mayor Rep.
But I'm not sure.
It's number one.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the public hearings for what?
Right, it's on resolution one.
I wasn't sure if we had to even be here.
It's to schedule a public hearing, that's why we didn't act on it tonight. What we will probably do is to schedule it for a public hearing, and that time for you to speak on it, then would be December the 10th.
Okay, okay, so I can leave?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is also new to us.
No, no problem. The ones that we just went through, that's what I was looking at, and that was not one of them that we acted on tonight, but we will be potentially scheduling a public hearing for the other one on Erie Street.
December 10th, okay.
December the 10th.
We weren't sure what your letter said, and my son just, he's the owner, and he said, "Come in and just check it out," and I thought.
If you have any inquiries or anything that you want to do ahead of time, you should contact the planning department and call Mrs. Harmer.
Okay.
Okay? Don't leave it until that night to come in.
Is that Cindy?
No, Kim Harmer.
Kim, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Oh, you're welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address city council this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz? And we will take the vote.
Mayor Rep, could we have resolution number nine taken off the consent agenda, please?
Yes, we can.
I'm still trying to learn when I should get my two cents in.
Nope, no problem. Nine is removed, and then we will vote on the rest of them.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. There's a number of items on the consent agenda. Received notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission about transferring ownership of the liquor license at the Thomas Edison Inn to J.B. Real Estate Development, LLC. Resolutions set public hearing for December the 10th on several code cases at 1715 Street, 3020 Sturgis Street, 1011 Erie Street, 1013 Erie Street, 703 Superior Street, 2313 Mini Street, 3314 30th Street, and 914 Bancroft Street. Confirmed as declared single lot special assessments in a total amount of $2,111.61 for removal of noxious weeds or unlawful growths or blighting factors. Approved a payment of $9,994.43 to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for Community Public Water Supply Annual Fee. Recognized Samborn Grasham Memorial Home as a nonprofit organization. Reappointed Sharon Bender and David Schwartz to the Planning Commission, terms to expire August the 11th, 2015. Reappointed David Schwartz to Zoning Board of Appeals as the Planning Commission representative with the term to expire August 11th, 2015. Reappointed Pauline Rep as the alternate representative to the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission for a three-year term to expire November 24th, 2015, and made permanent temporary traffic control order 1255, which reads 19th Street shall stop for Pine Street. And that is, it rescinds a previous order. That is the consent agenda, and then we'll move on to resolution number five.
Resolution number five is authorizing the reconveyance of the Water Street Marina property to the city from Hotel Development Services, LLC.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
My only question is, if we take the property back, do we still have the right to sell it? I don't want us to take it back and just sit on it. That's my only objection.
The answer is yes, you have the right to sell it.
You don't have to go to another vote or anything?
Correct.
Thank you.
The only condition on the vote was that the property has to sell for $300,000 or more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Thanks, Todd. Go ahead and take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Resolution number nine.
Resolution number nine is adopting a revised schedule of fees effective January 1st, 2013, for various sections of the Code of Ordinances and other specific, or other user specific fees.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess some of the comment, I've had several comments the last couple of days, and partly some of it's from the Port Huron Landlords Association. I guess they're worried about, are we making Port Huron an inviting community? We've had a lot of zoning and applications where the process had no fees, and we were having fees as much as $500. And special permits has gone up to $350. Liquor license application has gone up to 500, and we have a number of, in the applications back here, that all went from nothing in their new ordinances to $500. I guess the other question I have here is the fact that if you look at the meter reading charges, if a resident has still the manual reading services, that we're going to charge him $75 each quarter. I've been down here today trying to figure out, and I couldn't even get a ballpark number on how many people still have mechanical meters, but it seems to be anywhere between 1,000 and 3,000 residents. And I'm looking at, if you've got 1,000 people, that's $75,000. And I guess, how can we get this money, and where's it going to go, and do we need to adjust our budget? I guess it's more of a question than a statement. I mean, it's just, it's a huge source of revenue, but there's nothing guaranteed, because if these people don't want the meters, they might not pay the bill either, so.
Well, I guess we can have, if we could have somebody answer. You asked on several different points, so if we had to start with the water meter, I guess, first.
Bob, you want to do the water and chief? And Kim?
Mayor Rep and councilmembers, the reason why we went to automated meter reading was to reduce the cost to our customers, and any reduced cost is then reflected in the rates that everyone pays. The automated meter reading system is allowing us to reduce our cost in that we can eliminate the current reading system, the software and the equipment, and we propose to reduce our staffing by 1.6 full-time equivalents. As a matter of fact, we've already reduced one staff member who reads meters, and our goal was to reduce one additional staff member. And that's included in our current year budget as part of the revenue, or the revenue savings or the cost savings we would have, would pay for the automated meter reading. For those customers who choose not to use the automated meter reading system, and that appears to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about, we estimate about 313 accounts out of the almost 13,000 accounts we have across the city. It doesn't seem quite right for the, you know, almost, what'd be 12,900 and some odd accounts, or 600 and some odd accounts, to be paying the cost, which is considerable. We estimate about $93,600 a year to retain equipment and staff to go out and hand-read meters when everyone else is cooperating. So rather than spread that cost to everyone, all of those who have cooperated with the program, we've decided, or are proposing, that instead of having everyone pay this cost, have just those who are not working with the program to pay those costs. And so we calculated what that cost would be distributed over those 313 accounts, and it averages out about $300 a year, or $75 a quarter. Now certainly, our hope is that everyone will participate, and we intend to send out, we have already once, and we'll be sending out more letters, encouraging people to participate because it saves all the ratepayers dollars. We try to reason with them, but by having this fee in place, we will also be able to inform them what the cost would be for not cooperating, and hopefully, that will encourage them to save everyone money. So that's really what the fee is.
So this basis?
You will see also in those fees that we're reducing the fee for automated initiation meter reading and post or complete meter readings, if an automated meter reader is there, meter reading system is installed. Currently, we charge $20, which is a cost for a person to go out and physically take the read. Now we'll be able to read that automated, on an automated basis, and so it's more of an administrative activity, report writing and so on, and that's being reduced to $10 for a final read and initiation of a new meter.
I guess, I guess the only really question I had is, is number one, it's a fee, but it's also, it's kind of punitive, and I really think the new system's great, but I just wish there was something upfront where we could have told these people the responsibilities and the penalty for not doing it, and this just doesn't.
Yeah, and that's, that's what the purpose of this is, is to put something in place so we can inform the community, for those that don't participate, that this is the cost for not participating, and so that the rest of us aren't paying for those that don't cooperate.
Yeah. To me, it's just unfair. Money's not a good penalty.
If you give me another one, I'd be happy to accept.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we could shut the water off, but that's not a good penalty either.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep? I have a question for Bob before I sit down.
Sure.
I understand there were some meters that couldn't be replaced due to water line sizes, not due to customer not wanting to, so what?
No, we haven't had any cases.
Yeah, well, I have one, so.
Well.
So that's how I know.
Those were, again, we're still in the process of installing. Currently, they're about 83% on completion of installation. Certainly, we would not think to implement this fee until after all installations are in.
They have installed one, because I have two, and they don't have the equipment to do the other.
They ran out of meters, yeah.
So I was assuming for other people, we're going to tag that account to say, this person didn't refuse, we couldn't do it, and they won't be charged.
This would be only those that refuse installations.
Just making sure.
Yep, good question, I'm sorry. Yep.
And we wouldn't begin this, but we'll be sending out in the letter, asking for cooperation,
but it is my estimation, we wouldn't begin this until we've given everyone as much opportunity as possible to cooperate, and so it wouldn't be imminent. It would be something that would begin only after people continually refused.
Mayor Rep?
I have one more question. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that $75 you're thinking will cover the costs that the city will incur to have to continue to have the software and send the meter readers out.
And an additional employee that we cannot reduce by. Now, if, if we have fewer and fewer property owners that remain with those systems, those costs could increase over the years. We'll have to look at it on an annual basis, and if, currently, we're estimating 313 customers wouldn't participate. If that number is reduced, and we still have the same fixed cost, we may be coming back with a fee that's higher in the future.
Okay.
Our goal is for everyone to cooperate, and that's where we, that's where we want to work towards.
Definitely.
Anyone else?
One final question. Are you, beans this is enforced in December 1st, are you working with any of the, I know there's landlords that maybe have 40 homes, and he's acknowledged maybe it's that five or six of them that aren't ready yet, or the tenants didn't allow somebody in, too?
Landlords have already received two letters.
Okay.
And they'll be getting a third. So once again, our goal is not to charge a fee, our goal is to have everyone have automated meters, and then we all enjoy the savings from implementing the program.
Okay.
But if they refuse to, then that's the only way for us to cover the cost fairly.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember.
The resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, says December 1st, 2012, and then on the agenda, it says January 1st, 2013?
I thought it was January 1st, you just said 12.
The resolution says December 1st, 2012, but the agenda says January 1st, 2013, so just ask it for clarification.
Yeah, which date is it?
I believe it's according to the schedule, but I don't know if Ed has any difference opinion of that.
What's the schedule?
Well, the resolution covers all of the fees.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't, you know, I don't know how that was, I only am involved with some of the fees, so.
Well, the actual resolution says on it December 1st, but the agenda says, I guess, guess which one's wrong, the resolution or the, or the agenda?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, I apologize, I do not know the answer.
You don't know when they were?
I would move to amend the agenda to January 1st, 2013, to be on the safe side.
Yeah, to keep it, the resolution, you mean?
Resolution.
Yeah.
And that's fine, may I?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. We'll have to vote on that first, and then we'll get back to the discussion.
One final question, I was reminded here by my colleague here. What is NEZ and what is OPAH?
Well, right now, we're just going to vote on changing the date, and then we'll get back to questions, okay? Okay. So this is just a vote on changing the date from the Act 2, January 1st, 2013, on the actual resolution, so.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. So now you have before you still, and I think there were some questions still you had, yes, and if Kim Harmer could answer some of those.
Councilmember Harris, your question with regards to OPAH and NEZ. OPAH really stands for Obsolete Property Redevelopment Act. And it is a tax incentive that is offered to developers, some of them have come before council, where you give them an abatement, if you will, or freeze their taxes at a pre-renovation level for anywhere from six to 12 years. Nez is the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, and that is, the easiest way, I guess, to describe it is from Glenwood to Court Street along our Main Street area. It was created almost 10 years ago in order to promote loss developments downtown. And again, it's a tax incentive, it takes the property, the land, and the first floor commercial freezes the value of the second, and in some cases, third floors that are vacant, and then provides this incentive to create loss, residential loss. And that is for six years with a ramp up of an additional three years for a total of nine years that they're receiving this abatement. So that kind of goes back to the question I believe you had with regards to, well, we've never charged to implement or create these districts, why would we propose to charge now? And really, it came about, our office and many in the city departments have been so busy trying to accommodate some of these, they each require publications, public hearings, a variety of paperwork, some require research, development of property parcel maps, et cetera. And while we never charged for those, we were in turn giving anywhere from six to 12 years tax abatement, basically, on them. So we felt that there should be some sort of a charge, many communities do it, to make sure that when the application comes in, they understand that there is some kind of cost and time effort that's put into this. You'll recall, we had another one where they wanted to expand the DDA boundaries, and I believe we worked on that for close to nine months, and had several publications and public hearings, and at the last minute, they changed their mind. And that's certainly fine, but again, the time and some of the costs that was applied towards that, we felt that should be offset somewhat with some kind of an application fee. So that's why we proposed it for your consideration.
Any other questions for Kim?
You mentioned, you mentioned that other communities often have an application fee like this, are they similar charge?
Some are actually quite a bit more.
Okay.
And we really didn't want to go that route.
Okay.
We wanted to be reasonable. We wanted to cover the fees that we thought we had involved with it, we weren't looking to make any money off of it, and because these programs are something that we really want to see happen throughout our community, we didn't want to scare anybody away. So no, we're probably half to a third of what some of the other communities charge.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. I think the only other question was about the liquor license one, I don't know who wants to answer that one.
I'm just going to piggyback the other department heads. Basically, there's a cost to perform that service, that investigative services, and we use a variety of different investigative means. As an example, in a redevelopment license, we would look, where does the money come from? Is that money being laundered? Where's the background? That type of stuff. And there's a cost in there. I will tell you, we are on the low side. There's communities in surrounding counties that require $1,500 to perform that, or $2,500 to perform those type of complex investigations. They get a packet that's about this thick, they have to do this three years with the taxes, I mean, there's a big investigation that goes on us to recoup some of our costs, because candidly, the taxpayers here shouldn't pay for that person's investigation, she should pay for his own.
Any other questions for the chief?
So why did you go on the low side?
Because we're just breaking you in a little bit. I'm trying to get you used to this pay-for-the-service-the-fee-service thought process. As Kim mentioned, we've been kind of going over our fees and realizing other communities charge for services that we perform on a daily basis for free, not to taxpayers, for outside entities that come here and want something. As she, you know, mentioned the one request for a zoning change, they did work on that for nine months, and then they put an extensive amount of hours into that, and to have somebody just pull that back, that cost is gone, so the taxpayers are born that cost. We feel us, you know, let's err on the side of the taxpayer and try to get some money upfront for that cost. I'll be honest with you, in the liquor business, $500 for investigation, they would gladly pay that, that's.
I guess that's the one that stands out, that doesn't happen all that often, those transfers.
Not on a redevelopment license, it doesn't happen that often, so that's.
Why we don't do it?
Well, because I don't think we'll see a whole lot of redevelopment licenses, we'll see more transfers, we'll see more, a lot of escrow account type things, but, so I've got it structured a little bit differently.
Okay.
If it's a new license and that type of stuff. And as Bob said, we'll keep looking at it every few years, and, you know, we'll see where our costs are, and then make them cost appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember.
For the chief. Actually, not a question, but more of a statement, and I don't know if you have the document there. Overdue parking tickets, there's no change. Let me make a suggestion, thinking outside the box and being Black Friday and Cyber Monday here. A lot of communities, as you brought up, communities, instead of the ticket being $10, and after 10 days, we double it to 20, the ticket should be $20, and if you pay it within three days, it's 10. And people tend to pay more and faster, and a lot of, most communities do that now.
We're looking at an AMSTI program right now, we haven't rolled it out yet, because we didn't have all the bugs rolled out of it from the police department's perspective and getting with the finance department. But we're looking at that not only in parking and parking tickets, perhaps in charges, OWY fees and stuff, and trying to get people to pay some of their past accounting, drive revenues a little bit, but also take some of the stuff off the books. We did fix the one issue you talked about in regard to the parking meters, all the cards are, the process should have been changed by now, and I'll look at that, changing, maybe we change it to 20 and then give a quick.
I know the cities where I get tickets, that's the way they do it, so.
I'm not a big proponent of a forced ticket issue, I'd like to get compliance through other means.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep, I probably shouldn't say this, but everybody was looking at me because I was laughing. So this is a joke, all right? Just take it lightly. I didn't know, Councilmember Archibald didn't know council members get their water free, but that's what I was like. Just a joke, everyone, just.
Yeah, you better have answered a couple times.
Just a joke, just a joke. Okay.
Now we know what you were laughing about. Okay, we need to take a vote, and this would be resolution nine as amended, to make sure the date is January 1, 2013.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohler.
I'm split, so I'm going to say no, but some of them are yes and some are no, so no.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. That concludes our agenda announcements. We do have a special council meeting next week, December 5th, at 6:00 PM, upstairs, and that will be, we will have a discussion about our budget, and where we stand for this year, and what we're, and going forward, and any other business that might come before us at that time. And also, as a reminder to everyone, the snow ordinance goes into effect December 1st,